This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and have us roll call in and then I will give an update about myself chairing here tonight. Laura is out for a work situation. All right. Mayor LaChapelle.
Here.
Linda Markey.
Here.
Eric Ayette.
Here.
Ben Hershey.
Here.
Sam Hunter.
Here.
Taylor Scott is not here and Megan Harvey is here. Okay. So, we are, I'm going to hit record on this because we have a backup recording that happens on here. Okay, so we are recording on Google Meet and we are also live streaming with East Hampton Media. And I think those are my two tech announcements. I am chairing tonight. Laura Scott is at a work situation and she couldn't be here. So I'm temporary chair or whatever the word is for that. And we have Linda Markey as temporary secretary for the evening. All right. And I will ask myself if there's any correspondence to report now. And we do have a couple of pieces of correspondence to report, which is that we received a letter from concerned parents sent from a small group of parents that were then, that my understanding is, and then they drafted it and then they talked to other parents and it was signed by, I think the last time we looked at it, it was at something like 82 signatures. And the letter is about discipline issues at the Mountain View School, concerns around programming in the elementary school and middle school grades at Mountain View, and sort of just some general concerns about unmet needs with some specific action steps requested in that letter. We also received three follow-up emails from parents who signed that, who are part of the original 82, that just added some additional clarification, removing their support for the letter in a couple of days after that. I don't have any other correspondence to report. Did anyone receive any other correspondence? Okay. I also have no gifts to report.
Oh.
Yeah, nothing tonight. All right. So with that, I will go ahead and share my screen and we can get an update from our student rep Piper Boral.
Hi.
Hello. Let me see if I can get this up.
Can I just ask real quick?
Absolutely.
Are we doing, are we going to do public speak after? I'm just looking at the agenda.
Yes, I'm, so we don't have the student rep. Usually we put it in the announcements up front and I just, it's not in there, but yes, I'll do public comment afterwards.
Thank you.
Yes. Good clarification. Okay.
Alrighty. So in science and our, yeah, in science we're doing mutations and evolution. In math, we're doing the Pythagorean theorem. In civics, we're doing the Bill of Rights. And the week before break, I think, we watched Hamilton because we were learning about stuff. And in ELA, we're learning about the Holocaust, but we're doing MCAS practice right now because we had that today. And then in art, we're doing paper mache masks. In music, we're doing guitars. Gym, we're doing pickleball. Steam, we're making tiny houses. And in health, we're doing smoking and vaping. And my next slide, I just said that MCAS was very tiring and we have our next, I think it's math is in May and science too. And then I have a countdown for how many days until school.
Fair enough. I love that, today, last day.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you, Piper.
Bye, Piper.
All right.
That was hilarious.
All right. So we are now to the point of our agenda where I'm going to open up the floor for public comment. We'll follow our general rules for this, so we'll take people who are in the room. There are none of the public in the room, but if anyone comes while this minute is open, you have three minutes, please tell us who you are and your relation to the school. If you are online, you can use the hand raise feature. And again, three minutes and tell us who you are. And we are not able to respond, but we are listening and taking notes. So 6:05 and the floor is open for public comment. I won't make us wait a full 60 seconds, seeing that there are none in the room. Last chance, last call for any folks who are joining us remotely. It is now 6:06. I'm closing public speak and I will turn over the update to our superintendent.
Oh, good evening. Today, I just want to give you an update on some of the great things that are happening here in East Hampton Public Schools. One of the exciting things is that the We the People group did go to Washington DC. There were 48 states that were represented there. Each state could have two teams. And Massachusetts had one team. And we came in 10th in the nation. So that is like the most, you know, amazing feat for our students here to compete. As, you know, they have been practicing all year. Myself and Mr. Bernier both had the great opportunity of being judges for practicing for them and to go and to listen to what they had to say. And, you know, I actually wish that I knew the Constitution and the Bill of Rights as well as they do. They know it as well as any state legislator, senator. I mean, they could be a lawyer and they're still, still in high school. So I did talk to a lot of the students today, asked like, you know, what is that like? Like you've gone, you've worked so hard all year. They met with Congressman Neal. He came here, he did a session with them. They also met with him in Washington DC. So I was wondering, like, are you wishing that it was still continuing? And the most amazing responses from students were, no, I'm already made plans. You know, I'm going to be a mentor next for the new students because you only can participate in this program once. You can't stay. So I'm going to be a mentor. I'm going to go to an education college, be a teacher, and I'm going to lead We the People to also participate in this program. Probably won't stay in Massachusetts because I don't want to compete against East Hampton, they said, but we want to partner with East Hampton and we want to, you know, practice together. So this has really had a really lifelong effect on these students, you know, their confidence, their ability to handle themselves, to be able to think. To watch the news, I had a conversation with them, like when you watch the news and you read what's happening in our country and around the world and, you know, and also what's happening, you know, directly in Congress, what do you think? And they say, I always think about what they're saying, how is it reflected really and what the frame is of our Constitution wanted for our country. And to think, you know, we're talking to, you know, students that are in the 11th and 12th grade, for them to have that frame of mind and see how far they came from when they started that class to they are now. It's really a lot to say, the teacher Kelly Brown is there. It's really a lot to say about their families, themselves, the school system here and all the mentors for this program. The second thing I want to talk about is we are meeting on May 1st with other districts around here to do the final arrangements for our UMass early college course that will be offered next year at East Hampton High School. It's going to be a sociology class. There'll be UMass credit for it. The students are also going to be able to be involved, a lot of activities with UMass. They'll bring them on campus, they'll invite them to different events. And we're partnering with two other districts also because you need a certain number, so we needed to fill up a full class of students. So we do meet on May 1st. We'll also include our guidance counselors and our principal of the high school in that. So that's exciting that finally, you know, where UMass in this area is going to offer for the first time an early college class and we're going to be on the ground floor of that.
That's great.
We did get the ST Math Grant for kindergarten through grade eight. Most of the focus is K through six. That's a grant offered by the 1-8 Foundation. It's, the program itself is $30,000 a year per school. However, with the grant, it's only $3,000. It is an amazing program. It's a computer program. It does not replace math curriculum. It's the end, right? So all kids go on it. It teaches them to conceptualize math and to know why things happen the way they do. And across the country has been shown to bring great increase in math scores. So really happy that we got the grant. The staff, we have to have a champion. The champion is in the elementary school, so tomorrow. All ST Math programs in Massachusetts are going to be in Worcester at the DCU Center as a kickoff, being invited to get involved in this very important program. Also, next week, the Play Chicago is here. It's at the high school. It's a great play. You can go online and buy tickets and the students would, you know, really appreciate that. There's also an opportunity to sign up to help backstage, looking for backstage for help. Mr. Evans and I will be the backstage help on Friday. So if you'd like to join us, you know, moving around a few things and sitting with the kids as, you know, they go in and off the stage. So we're looking forward to that. The students also just returned from a great trip from France. It's really wonderful to be able to travel. And Ms. Mango did a really great job with them. They saw a lot of things. They went to the beach of Normandy, they took sand from there, you know, they got to look at that site, which was, you know, very important and something that the students themselves realized being there, they were in a very special place. So I guess next year they're, they're off to Panama. So there's another great trip and great opportunity for our students. And the final thing is that we are going to have We the People in May present so they can give you a slideshow. And also Ms. Mango's class is going to give us a slideshow too sometime in May. And I just really want to formally thank the mayor for her support of our budget. We know that everywhere around us, all through the state, people are really suffering because of the inflation rate and the budget and had to make cuts in their staff. And we have not had to make cuts. And so we're looking forward, working with the mayor and also the city council as they just, you know, go through the rest of the budget process. But we feel great that we have a solid budget. We're going to be able to run a really strong school system again next year and that we can celebrate that we're not, we didn't have to lay one person off. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll echo that thanks from the finance subcommittee and from the entire school committee to our director of business services, Nick Bernier, and to Mayor LaChapelle, and to our admin and our superintendent. Just, we feel really proud that we're not going to be in a position that so many other districts are in, that we don't have to composition, that we are going to be able to keep level services and focus on growth and all of these exciting, you know, new college kind of opportunities and all this kind of stuff. So, you know, this is, it's not the beginning, it's an ongoing process, but we're, it's onwards. And I think we're all really excited for that and just thank you for that support and thank you for all the hard work. Did you have an update around the gym floor that you wanted to give?
Oh, yes. Did you want to say anything about the gym floor? And then, Mr. Bernier has an update.
Okay, our business director will, will go ahead and do it before we all got too happy.
All right. How detailed do you want me to get here? What do we know about the gym floor and what do we not know about the gym floor?
I don't think we know anything.
I assume we don't know anything.
Oh, boy. All right. Well, I don't know, a couple of months ago, our facilities director noticed that there was some water trickling essentially from a wall near where the gym was. Not knowing where it came from, of course, he did some investigating, ended up having to cut into a block wall and found, on two separate occasions, elbow joints, which, you know, forgive my lack of plumbing expertise here, but they seemed to be defective. They were leaking within the wall. There was no reason for them to be leaking other than probably manufactured defect.
Which school?
Oh, the high school, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Good clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, so anyway, they're in the middle of a block wall, there's no reason they should be leaking. It's not, nobody can hit them, there's no animals in there, you know. Earthquake didn't do anything because this happened beforehand. So, you know, unfortunately, because of where these things were located, like the leak wasn't noticed until water started traveling pretty far and was essentially going under the gym floor, causing a portion of the floor to essentially buckle and, you know, become really a safety hazard. I mean, it just started like in the entryway of the gym. So, you know, we brought in some fans and, you know, dehumidifiers and things to, you know, hope, like maybe we can stop the spread of it or correct it even. But it kept spreading to about, I'd say a quarter of the gym. So we had somebody from the insurance company come and evaluate and, you know, we're in the process of putting a claim in to replace what needs to be replaced to the floor. Pretty sizable project because the, you know, they're going to have to repaint the whole thing and refinish it afterwards or else it's going to, it's going to, you know, look like you got two separate floors in there. As well as replacing the boards and doing any kind of remediation work for whatever they find underneath the boards once they tear them up. So we're in the, as I said, in the process of submitting a claim. I believe with the knowledge I have at this point, it will be covered. So we would just have to pay a deductible for that, but it's about, I guess it's about $125,000 project. So we're, we're very thankful, you know, should that be covered. So, anyway, meanwhile, last week during April vacation week, another defective elbow was found in another portion of the building. So it seems like we've got a pattern here. Unfortunately, there's got to be probably hundreds of these things buried in the walls and they start leaking, you're not going to find it until water is somewhere where it shouldn't be. So we're going to certainly continue to monitor this and, you know, pursue avenues for corrective action should that be necessary.
Okay.
I'd say the sad thing is that they're in the concrete wall. So you have to be able to get the concrete out. We're very fortunate that we have Larry because he's done that work himself. So he's been able to get into the wall and actually do that work. That would have cost us a lot more if we didn't have him for sure.
Absolutely. Big shout out to Larry for this one.
Larry. Great. Just, so we were going to go up, really just feeling good about the budget and then just going to think about the gym floor.
It's how, how it goes.
Has all that work been scheduled for the summer or because we're still in the, like, estimates and figuring it out?
Yeah, we're still in that phase. I mean, the target is certainly the summer so it doesn't disrupt athletics and use of the, you know, gymnasium for academics and stuff. So I haven't received an update in over a week on where we are with that. So I would think probably soon I'll hear something, but I can touch base with Larry as well.
I was actually also, I was going to ask about that. Is it affecting athletics or gym periods or anything?
I mean, right now, not terribly because, you know, sports are generally outdoors at this time of the year. It does have an impact on PE classes, you know, they just can't use a portion of the gym because, I mean, you could trip and fall and if you've actually went and looked at it, you'd be like, oh, yeah. So, yeah, there's an impact in that sense. They're making it work and, you know, they will for the remainder of the year, but the target is certainly to get it done in the summer and have a nice new floor ready to go for volleyball season next year.
And you said that the second elbow, the second elbow joint was also in the gym.
The first two were, were in the wall connecting the gym to like where the locker rooms are. And then the other one was in a different portion of the building. So, I mean, I, I'm not an expert in this stuff, but I gotta think there's got to be some defect with the, the elbows themselves. I mean, it's, I don't think it's the way they were installed because there's no way the same person installed all of those throughout the whole building. I mean, I, I don't believe that that would be possible. I think the product itself is, you know, there's something going on there. Maybe the epoxy that was used or whatever, you know, that's going to be for somebody with a different degree than me to figure out, but we will, you know, as I said, we'll pursue action if, if needed, you know, if this continues to be a, a thing. Because, you know, we can't have parts of a 13-year-old building continue to be, you know, breaking like this all the time.
Luckily, it happened after basketball season was over.
Yes, yeah, we were lucky in that.
Yeah, we got lucky in a bunch of ways, actually.
We did.
Lucky, yeah. Any other, are there any questions for superintendent before we officially move on to the business update and we just go back to our director of business services? All right, you're up again.
All right. Well, I don't really have an official update. I generally only do that once a month. But I would like to take this opportunity to, to thank Mayor LaChapelle for her support of the school budget. You know, I know folks who work in each department, you know, they will fiercely advocate for their department during the budgeting process and, you know, all of us, no matter what department we work in, can certainly have a myopic view from time to time. And it's, it's Mayor LaChapelle that has to balance all of this and put it together into a balanced package that can be presented to the city council, you know, both responsibly and that meets the needs of the city. So that's a lot to do because there's a lot of departments within the city and the school ask this year was larger than normal, as we've said many times. And I just, I very much appreciate the support of the budget for next year so we can meet the needs of our kids.
Happy to do it. Anything else? No?
All right.
All right. We're going to move along to school committee discussion and updates from our subcommittees. Do we have an update from the policy subcommittee other than the readings we're going to do in a little bit?
No, other than we are meeting again on Friday morning.
Wonderful. There is, I'll ask the finance chair if there's any updates. Are there any updates from finance? Oh, sorry. Bad joke. I'm, I'm the chair of finance. There are no updates.
I thought it was good.
Thank you. There are no updates from the finance committee. We've just, we've put in a ton of meetings and, you know, ran the superintendent and our director of business services through it and now this has been a little break for the finance committee. So, thank you again from the finance subcommittee. Thank you to the mayor. And do we have a CES update?
We don't have a CES update. I think the next meeting, I think, is not until the end of the month, so.
Okay, that moves us along to action items. And I'll put our policy sub-chair, our subcommittee chair in charge of making the motions and then, these are second readings. So Sam will make the motion, someone will second it, and then we can discuss it. Sam will explain the policy to us and update us on things around that and then we can vote.
Yes, and from the previous meeting, there was one policy which is not, which we didn't end up doing a first reading of, and that is not included in this, but otherwise everything else seems to be here. And the, I see that the name of the school is also accurate in these, which is great.
Great.
All right. So we'll start with the one, the first one, BHE, which is Use of Electronic Messaging by School Committee Members. I move to do the second reading of this policy. I need a second.
Second.
It's either Linda or Ben. Any discussion?
Can you?
Do you want me to summarize them as we go through again?
Yeah, would you re-summarize? You don't come into as much detail if it's a second reading. Are there any changes from the last time we talked about it?
There are no changes from the last time we talked about it. And just for the public, actually, this is a really important one for the public to understand. Basically, these are some expectations for school committee members and the way that they're going to use electronic messaging, both with each other and with others. Essentially, we, we still have a open meeting law. According to open meeting law, if there's four of us involved in an exchange, that's considered a quorum and it's considered a meeting. So we can't be talking about matters before the school committee amongst ourselves without being a public meeting. And that goes for electronic conversations as well, which in practical terms, this means like we can't all edit a Google document together. So if you think about the way that like modern life works and the way that you like, are used to collaborating with people, a lot of those avenues are not available to us. So just, that's why sometimes things seem a little slow and clunky is because we have to do a lot of the work, we have to do all the work in public. Additionally, we, we can only message each other when it comes to things that aren't related to school committees such as housekeeping purposes, you know, asking, making sure that people know when a meeting is. We can, we're allowed to do that, but we can't talk about items that might come before the committee or that have come before the committee. And then also anytime anybody from the public messages us, you know, that is, that can be considered a public record, even if it's sent to our personal Facebook accounts or if it's sent to our personal cell phone numbers or our personal email addresses. So just bear in mind when you're talking with us, you're talking with public officials. And this is not the one that, this does not, this is not the one that involves social media as much, but we can get into that in a little bit. Is that a good summary?
A great summary. Any questions? Some discussion? All right. With the absence of our people here, our usual people here, I'll just do a roll call vote. Ben Hershey.
Aye.
Eric Ayette.
Aye.
Linda Markey.
Aye.
Sam Hunter.
Aye.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Aye.
And Megan Harvey, aye.
All right. So our next one is EHAA, District Security Relating to Technology. And I motion to do a second reading of this policy.
Second.
Excellent. So this is, so this basically is a, this is a new policy. We didn't have a policy like this on the books before. And this is from MASC, as the previous one was new and also from MASC. And basically, this is just a kind of a blanket statement regarding the security that you can expect when using technology in our school district. We have to make sure that we balance student privacy and personnel privacy and make sure that we kind of keep our, keep everything as secure as possible. And that we, that we should be, what's this? Oh, yeah, we have to maintain district data, district data protection system for sensitive district information as well. This is all stuff, by the way, that we are, I believe, when we talked about this in policy subcommittee, this is all stuff that is pretty much already being done in our district. It's now just, we have an official policy for it, as written by MASC. So, or we will, if we pass this.
Right. Thank you. Any discussion? All right. We'll go ahead for a vote. Ben Hershey.
Aye.
Eric Ayette.
Aye.
Linda Markey.
Aye.
Sam Hunter.
Aye.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Aye.
And Megan Harvey, aye. Motion passes.
All right. The next one is JICJ, which is Student Use of Technology in Schools. And I motion to do a second reading of this policy.
Second.
All right.
That was Ben.
That was Ben. So, so this is a very broad policy about the use of technology by students. And basically, it is saying that part of our job in the public schools is to teach students how to use technology appropriately and successfully. There is a digital, there is a digital use form or there will be a digital use form, I believe there already is, that students have to sign and agree to. And that's developed by the superintendent and the director of technology. And if any, that form also has to be signed by a parent or a guardian for students under the age of 18. And that will outline to them what is considered acceptable use of technology in our schools. And there's no expectation, students have no expectation of privacy in the use of district digital resources, which includes, you know, if we're giving out, if we're letting them use laptops or computers or other technology. And it also does apply to our, our internet service, our wifi in the school district. So, and that is pretty standard for those of you who work in kind of a modern office So, and that is pretty standard for those of you who work in kind of a modern office setting. This is pretty expected in the workplace. So, it's a norm that we're teaching students that will be relevant to them as adults as well. And it does say that failure to abide by district policies and procedures can be met with consequences. Again, this is a very, very broad policy. And then what happens is that our administration in our buildings kind of add their own practices on top of that. So, if you look in the school handbooks for both of the schools, you'll see kind of various expectations for students around use of technology, which includes but isn't limited to personal devices like cell phones and also includes school devices as well. So, all of that is already in there. It's already compliant with this. This is just a new policy as written by MASC. So, any other questions or anything on that?
Just the guardrails, really?
Yeah, it's just, it's just, we have to have it on the books. We haven't had it in the past, so.
Further discussion or questions? All right, we'll go to the vote. Ben Hershey.
Ben Hershey, aye.
Erica Ayette.
Aye.
Linda Markey.
Aye.
Sam Hunter.
Aye.
And Mayor LaChapelle.
Aye.
Megan Harvey, aye. Motion passes.
All right, so the next one, and I've only got, I've got two left. So, appreciate everybody's patience. The next one is KDC. And the title of this is Community Use of Digital Resources. And I motion to do a second reading of this policy.
Second.
Excellent.
That was Ben.
So, essentially, this is just saying, again, we're gonna, the superintendent and the director of technology, together will determine who from the public, from the community, can access which equipment or software or wireless internet access in the school buildings. And basically, anybody who is using those devices or that service has to agree to the district's policies and procedures regarding responsible use. That before logging onto Wi-Fi, guests have to accept the district's digital use form. And the superintendent or the designee can revoke that access for anybody at any time. And again, this is very, very standard. It's just not something that we have had as an official policy, but it is a practice that we've been observing. And anybody who's ever logged into our Wi-Fi has had to click that little box saying that you're gonna follow all the rules. And so, that's, that's that.
Great. Any discussion? All right, Ben Hershey.
Ben Hershey, aye.
Erica Ayette.
Aye.
Linda Markey.
Aye.
Sam Hunter.
Aye.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Aye.
Megan Harvey, aye. Motion passes.
All right, and so this last one is, it's file KDCB. It is titled District Website and Social Media. And I motion to do a second reading of this policy.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Ben. So, for, for this policy is, pertains to both our websites and our social media presences and also our use of social media. So, essentially, it's saying that East Hampton Public Schools is gonna maintain a district website. And some school's social media accounts, it doesn't say on what platforms because this is a policy that's supposed to last for longer than six months, which is how long some of these platforms stick around. All of the online platforms that are representing the school are gonna be operated by district staff acting in their professional capacities. One of the things that is a really important note in this that we determined we were gonna have to kind of make sure is follow through on is that all of our social media sites or websites have commenting turned off because it's, just because of equity of access, essentially. And, you know, just, this isn't explicitly stated in this, but this is the same reason why, you know, school committee members can't actually interact with members of the public online in our official capacity either. Because if one person can, can get access to you that way and not everybody else, it's really unfair. Or if you have to join a certain social media platform in order to have your questions answered, that's really unfair to the community. So, so that's one, one thing you might notice that we don't participate as much online now that we're in these official roles. And that is one of the reasons why. Additionally, it specifies that unauthorized use of the district or the school name is prohibited. And that, you know, there's a high priority that should be placed on platforms being accessible, frequently updated, and user-friendly. So, you know, we're gonna continue to look at our presences, our website, and then also our social media presences to make sure that we're, that those sites are accessible, user-friendly, frequently updated. Everything on there is current. We've got the right names for people so that when people need to use our website to, to find the names of certain administrators or teachers or whatever, they're able to do that. So, we're, it's a, it's a work in progress at all times because these things need to be continuously updated. But, so we've got the policy now. But again, this is, this is in line with our previous practice beforehand. We just didn't have it written down.
Is there a plan for the website? I thought I heard someone saying that maybe it's gonna be.
We've heard it.
Yeah, maybe it's gonna be revised or revamped or redesigned. I don't know if that's true or not.
So, there's something with the website. Next time we can, actually, Justin come and actually explain.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes.
I think that would be great, actually, because I think, you know, I know that we're required to put certain things on the website per DESI. And, and then there's also certain things that community members expect to find on the website. And there are certain places where things have to go. And I think it would be helpful, I don't really know a whole lot about it, but I do know that it gets, it, there is a lot on any school district website and it can be a lot to sift through to find what you're looking for if you're a parent. Especially if you're a parent and you're like, I just need to find out, like, when ELA night is, you know? And you're like, on the website, like, trying to sift through all this stuff. So, I would actually really love that because I would love to hear a little more about what goes into that. And so, and maybe we can, can give some feedback as well. That would be great.
And through the chair, could we also invite Jean Lippi? Because she does the social media that's connected to the website. If we could have both here?
I think that would be great, yeah. And so, anybody who's listening to this, you know, if you, if you have kind of thoughts about that, I'd love to hear them, feel free to email me.
Yeah. And happy everyone.
Would you like it to be?
Great question. I might defer that answer in case Chair Laura Scott has.
I think we should check in with Laura.
Okay. Scheme of what happens when.
Yeah.
Not scheme, plan.
Plan. But, yeah, no, I think this would be a cool thing to get more information on. It's always been something that I've been interested in learning more about, so.
I'm guessing it would be a couple of meetings out. And that would be great, it'll be on the agenda. Come to public speak, email us in advance. What are the pain points on the website? What can we make easier?
And also, like, what's working really well.
What's working really well, yeah. What should we not touch? Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, tell us what you don't want us, what, what shouldn't, should be left alone.
Yeah.
Sometimes I find, anyway, when changes are made to websites that I go to a lot, sometimes I get mad about it.
Yep.
Because I can't find what I need, so.
That's great.
So, yeah, that would be, that would be helpful feedback to get.
Great.
And that's all I got for policies. So, we will have some more. And this, this, like, kind of batch was all from MASC's December 2023 update. But they did do, like, a pretty massive policy handbook update a couple of years ago, which we had a lot of other stuff going on in the district at that point. But I mean, like, the newsletter of it, it's like 50 policies that have been changed. So, I'm gonna go through, a lot of those are just removing and consolidating policies. So, I'm gonna go through and I'm gonna check with MASC and see if we actually do have to do them all one by one or if there's some other way to do it. Because a lot of it is really just taking stuff out that either doesn't apply anymore or is not, not, you know, that is repetitive. So, I don't know that we should need to go through this whole process for every single one of them. But I'll check with MASC and see what they say, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this one? Ben Hershey.
Aye.
Erica Ayette.
Aye.
Linda Markey.
Aye.
Sam Hunter.
Aye.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Aye.
Megan Harvey, aye. Motion passes. We have one last action item on here, which is a motion to accept a one-year unpaid leave of absence request from Alexander Alvarez, a math teacher at East Hampton High School. Do you wanna give us any background? I made the motion, do I have a second?
Second. Me and Ben.
Sam got it. Any background?
Well, just basically that his, they have children that are in their transition grades. And so, his wife took this year and so he's gonna take next year. It's so that they can support their children as they go to those years of grades that have a lot of transition challenges. And he'll be back in a year.
Excellent, I'm, any discussion, questions? All right, Ben Hershey.
Aye.
Erica Ayette.
Aye.
Linda Markey.
Aye.
Sam Hunter.
Aye.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Aye.
Megan Harvey, aye. Best of luck. All right. We don't have any other spot on our agenda, but if there is any other, I'd be happy to hear your other. No other other.
Well, I did see, there was, sorry, I've got my pages all backwards.
There is another.
I did see a, just a piece of correspondence that was in here about the Veterans Day.
Oh, yes, yes.
I believe, what is this? Oh, no, for Memorial Day. Being invited to the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 27th. And I am going to make an effort to do that, so.
Oh, yes, okay, yes, thank you.
There is information here for people to follow up with about that if anybody else is interested, but.
This is, the Veterans Council of East Hampton has invited really everyone, it looks like, us, our organization, the community, to participate in the annual Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony on Monday, May 27th. And there is a series of, a schedule of events. So, parade participants are gathering at 10:00. And then, the parade will start at 10:30 and go down Clark Street and Cottage Street and Payson. There's a whole loop. And then, end at the Veteran War Memorials. And then, there will be a ceremony and then a complimentary lunch afterwards, if any. March as a member of school committee?
Yeah, I was gonna go, turn out, if we, if you guys.
Would any, anybody else be interested in marching in that as a member of school committee? I think I would like to.
Thank you, Joe.
I have to check the calendar. So, we have information about who to get in touch with, Tom or Jim, if we're gonna do it. And I would say we can maybe each member consider it and then get in touch and let them know if you.
Yeah, no, I think that would be great.
And information is in the packet.
I'm excited that it's happening again.
Yeah, that's great.
My son will be very excited about it, too.
And thank you for the invitation, my son, sorry for the oversight and.
No, it's, there's a lot going on.
Speaking of parades, the Hampshire Pride Parade is coming up. I was also asked about whether or not we could or wanted to participate in that.
Yeah.
Which parade?
Hampshire Pride.
Hampshire Pride.
Okay.
That's, I wanna say the 5th of May.
Yeah, it's the Saturday of the first weekend of May.
June 1st?
No, May.
Of May?
Yeah. It's always May around here, so the college students can go.
And I think there is a contingent from Mountain View School.
Yeah.